All right. Angela, would you please call the roll?
Winters?
Here.
Benson?
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Sherman?
Here.
Hannaford?
Here.
Hamilton? Stelling?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Item four is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 17, 2017. And item B, approval of claims in the amount of $215,282.94 and payroll expenses of Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll motion to approve the consent agenda.
Take it. I have a motion by Councilman Winters, a second by Dr. Hannaford to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Item six, reports from boards and officers. An Alva hospital authority board meeting from April 18, 2017. Dr. Hannaford.
Pretty routine. We had the CEOs report and CFO's report. As you remember, last month, we'd gotten word, we did have all three entities had a net profit for the prior month, which was a great gain. We had two doctors, one a reappointment, one another appointment for our credentialing to our courtesy staff. We had a copy report. We had a few approvals of some procedures and assessments. We did talk how it was important to see if the state was going to come up with some more revenue. Obviously, it would help to medicate some of the payments. If not, a lot of the nursing homes and some of the rural hospitals might be in a lot of trouble. We did have a report from St. Anthony's that are working very hard on trying to increase the number of rural residencies, that they would send out some of the doctors to get some of the residency work out in our area, which will be helpful. And then the final thing, we met and had the evaluation and approved the evaluation and to rehire Candace Allen as the CEO. And that is my report. If there's any questions.
Does council have any questions for Dr. Hannaford? All right, thank you. Alva Recreation Authority Board Meeting on April 19, 2017. Mr. Sherman?
Alva Recreation Board Authority, we went over the shade structures that they're looking into, getting closer to a decision on that. Got our designs drawn up, starting to set up a committee to go over the field maintenance. And on a report, we had 389 soccer kids come out this year, which was a huge increase over last year. Worked out great even with all the rain and the fields being torn up. And the baseball fields were on schedule for the tournament, and I believe we're looking great at the tournament from what I hear from people that win.
Tournament went very well. Over 30 teams participated, all of them guaranteed, four games. Great attendance, big crowd out there all week long, so it was a good deal. Does council have any questions for Mr. Sherman? Thank you. The Alva Tourism Tax Board Meeting on April 19, 2017. Mr. Benson?
They met and they had a couple of requests there. One was from the Meskotunga Arts Festival, which they approved for 14,000, not to exceed 14,000. They had one from the NWOSU rodeo coach, Stockton Graves, came in and was asking for some money to help with a steer wrestling, or most of us might know it by bulldogging, jackpot they had. And that was also awarded, and I forgot to put that in my notes, but I think that was like $4,500 that they voted to give him. And that was going to be held in Alva, I think it was a week ago Saturday, but if you remember, Saturday was raining all day. And that was going to be held out at their rodeo grounds north of town, it's going to be outside. They couldn't have it outside, so they moved to Cherokee, to the indoor arena. But almost all those people that were here stayed in Alva somewhere and came back here to eat and spend the night. So I'm sure we'll go ahead and honor their request and let them have that money. That's going to be a, he's going to try to make that a yearly deal, and there was some big time steer wrestlers here, several that had been to the national finals, so that's kind of a nice deal to bring in for Alva.
And not to exceed 4,800?
Thank you. I didn't write that on my notes for some reason. And we have several items on the agenda for this Wednesday evening's meeting. That's my report. If anybody has any questions, I'll try to answer.
Does council have any questions for Mr. Benson? Thank you, Bryce. Item D is the Alva Municipal Cemetery Board Meeting on April 25, 2017. Joe Don?
Well, it was a special meeting for the cemetery board. We did have them vote and discuss and recommend a budget for 2017, 2018 that is part, that was built in as part of our budget that we were talking about, that we've got, that we have yet to approve. And they also voted to allow the Alva Fire Department to do a controlled burn of some of the cemetery property in preparation for 4th of July celebrations. That controlled burn has not happened yet. Wind conditions haven't been appropriate. Fire department is still working on that. But that was the, there was some minor discussion about Memorial Day service, but there was no action taken on that.
Joe Don, I have a question. Should. With all the rain we've had and everything, are we going to be able to have the cemetery all mowed and edged? Or if not, is there a way we could use our?
We are working to have it all mowed and edged and looking good for Memorial, for Memorial Day.
I was just thinking, if he was having a hard time keeping up for it, maybe we could use our inmate crew that mows and stuff to go help him get caught up.
Yeah. And right now, I'm hoping that the weather kind of holds so we can finish the streets before Memorial Day. Because right now, we have streets torn up around that first block on the south, on the southeast corner, as you go in, where we replaced the driveway. We've got that circle kind of torn up to do a chip and seal out there. As long as the weather holds, we can get it done. But that's, right now, one of our goals is to get that part done too before Memorial Day. Thank you.
Does council have any other questions for Mr. Don?
Item E is the Alva Rain Authority Meeting on May 2. At their May 2 meeting, they had their regular business, and they also appointed or elected officers. Greg Glass will be chairman, Mike Hood will be vice chairman, and Dr. Cunningham will be secretary, Todd Holder will be treasurer. They also are continuing to discuss, the committees are continuing to discuss complex design and location and other funding issues for economic development. Be happy to try and answer any questions.
Item F is Park and Building Committee Meeting on May 2, 2017. Let's see.
That's me. Where's now? Where's now? Well, we had, our first action was to call discussion on chairman, and I got elected to be that, so.
Oh, that needs to be corrected. That's not what my sense.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, so we had a fairly routine meeting. As I mentioned, I was appointed chairman. We discussed some equipment needs. We looked at the preliminary budget. One of the equipment needs we were looking at was potential replacement of one of our major lawn mowers, which was factored into the new budget coming up. We also discussed some of the building repairs, both on the professional building and the library, both need HVAC replacements. Both were installed roughly the same time, so hopefully they don't all decide to go out at the same time. We did have just some, not, I wouldn't even call it preliminary discussion, we just had some conversations about ambulance building replacement, which has been ongoing talks that we've had for the last several months, just some potential ideas about, you know, location and needs and things of that nature. We did talk about, some more about the demolition requirements and what exactly would be required for when we have dilapidated properties, things where people need homes torn down and things of that nature, and how that's going to, how they're going to be charged and how we're going to go about doing that. And it's pretty much what we discussed, so.
Does council have any questions for Mr. Eckhart? All right, thank you. Item G is Public Safety Committee Meeting on May 4, 2017. Mr. Benson, do you have a report for sure?
I do. We heard from the department heads in the police department, the fire department, and the ambulance department, and they just told us a few things that was happening in their departments. One, ambulance, they're working closely with the billing company to collect monies that's owed to us that were been trying to get collected, and are working closely with that and trying to make that process better and faster. The police, they're in the process of purchasing new bulletproof vests, and those aren't inexpensive, so they're in the process of getting several of those new. The fire is looking at and considering buying a new thermal imaging device, which is the device that helps you find the fire if you're in a smoky house and don't really know where the fire is. It's like a camera and it'll expose that to you. And then also, and Joe Don might elaborate a little bit more on this, but probably the biggest thing we talked about that's going to be a money-saving thing is we're going to be replacing our, the way our storm sirens are activated. Right now, they're activated with a phone line, and those phone lines are costing us about $2,000 a month for those phone lines. And we're going to be changing those to be activated by radio. And we're going to have to buy the radios and things, but we'll pay for those with the savings on the phone lines and probably do it in less than a year, and then we'll be, have that much money free to hopefully to put aside to add some new storm sirens around town and perhaps even add ones that can be used without any electricity. So if you lose your electricity because of a storm or something, you can still be able to blow the siren. So hopefully some of that money saved will help us do some of those things in the future.
Right now, and right now, as far as that project's concerned, we're waiting on one more quote to come in. We anticipate that that's going to cost us somewhere in the neighborhood of $22,000 to $26,000. And of course, if it's over the $25,000 limit, you'll see that here at council. If it's under that, if it's under that limit, we'll go ahead and get it, get the project going. But we do expect about a $2,000 to $2,500 per month savings on our phone bills because of that change.
Does council have any questions for Joe Don or Mr. Benson?
Thank you, gentlemen. Item H is Street Committee Meeting on May 4, 2017. We discussed and reviewed the 2017, 2018 street maintenance plan. We're still planning on, on keeping a significant budget number available for street repair and replacement. The projects going on right now are in the area of zipping up the surface so we can get ready to resurface streets, both with asphalt overlay and some chip and seal in places. South Noble, folks have seen, is going to be an asphalt overlay. Big project coming up is going to be from 3rd to 9th on Flynn Street. So waiting on school to get out, waiting on the asphalt plant to open, and then it will be, patience will be requested as we tackle downtown. Flynn Street is in dire need of overlay, and so it's going to be a big problem coming up. Joe Don, you have anything to add?
Not to that meeting, no.
On the Flynn Street overlay in the downtown area here, is that curb to curb or just the driving portion?
The curb to curb.
Curb to curb.
We will coordinate that with downtown. We will probably only be working on one half of the street at a time. It'll take a while to get through that process.
Happy to entertain any other questions from council. Okay. Airport Commission Meeting on May 2, 2017. The airport board did approve a recommendation for 2017, 2018 operating budget. They discussed and acted to put a $1,000 purchasing limit for certain items at the airport to require board approval. They discussed but didn't, didn't act on access road to the new tee hangers, as well as lighting at the new tee hangers. They did allow some modifications to be made by the tenant of one of the new tee hangers, and they extended the time period for another tenant to get an airplane in their hangar. They discussed and ultimately opted to wait until after harvest to proceed with the new east-west turf runway. Had there been, there was action taken to not pay damages and also wait until harvest had happened, so before that. And then we did the airport manager's annual evaluation and coming back, in the executive session, coming back from executive session, there was no action to be taken on that. We did provide feedback to the business manager regarding the airport manager evaluation. I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the airport meeting.
This is probably why we placed a meeting, but who's responsible for mowing the right way and some of those areas that, I mean, that's real bad, real bad about the must this will come up?
The city's responsible for mowing. And I did get you, of course, you text messaged me or sent you a message earlier about the must this will. We sprayed for must this will both, both at the airport and at the rec park back in April as part of our preventive maintenance, and they were already working on it for what was coming up now. I think co-op was out spraying for, to finish those areas up today to kill that must this.
One of the, one of the areas at the airport that was under lease that had been a problem with that is no longer under lease.
That looks, that looks real good, that the park to the beach this year hangar and then all the right way, I don't believe it's been mowed this year, but they're like two and a half, three foot tall.
Yeah. I saw, and they were being sprayed today.
Next item on the agenda is Water, Waste Water Committee Meeting on May 9. Mr. Stelling, would you care to give us a report? And while you're at it, you can give us a report on sanitation.
All right. Joe Don, give us an update on the Young Street project. Said the DEQ had relaxed some of the requirements that was in that project or anything that might help us out. Talked about like internals on hand for most repairs for like the water lines and stuff. There was a report, I don't know if it was a DEQ deal, where like for water, water loss, where we produced 490 million gallons a year, and we metered 435 million. But that, and that loss includes any breaks, fire hydrants, any un-metered locations and stuff, so there's, that accounts for some of the discrepancy. Discuss, right now, it costs us about $2.88 per thousand gallon of water produced. DEQ, on the water supply, had checklist, they were asking us about those, like all the items that they have checked or they're being addressed. They recommended a monthly checklist on some operations. Capital improvements. I don't understand the notes. Replacing a water line south, down south, that's being postponed. They were concentrating on the Young Street project or anything. We just plan on this water replacement, so that's going to be shifted for now. I don't know, Joe Don, you have anything I missed? Or any questions?
No, that was the, that was the bulk of it for the water waste, water committee, loss report. Yeah.
And you clarified that $2.88 was for lost water, right?
That's, that's cost of production.
Total overall cost of production that we produce.
So once, if we're losing water, a water break or a water, like, or hydro test or whatever, it's costing us $2.88 a thousand. That's, that's revenue lost by that break or by that leak or?
In a large portion, that's unavoidable, but I mean, there's, but we're working towards getting everything metered to where we can kind of account for, if we do have undiscovered, you know, losses, that we can kind of do a little more housekeeping as far as trying to locate and decide what that's at. But I think it's, percentage wise, I think we're, we're looking good, I believe what you said.
Yeah. DEQ, and DEQ, as a percentage, our percentage loss, DEQ commented that it was one of, one of the better ones that they've seen as far as communities and maintenance. They see some with water losses that are 40 or 50 percent. And ours aren't near quite that, aren't near that. We're under, we're under the 10 percent limit, and that's kind of the standard. That's what they consider standard, acceptable, is 10 percent.
Any other questions regarding water, waste water from the council? You want to go ahead and do sanitation?
Yep. Well, sanitation, many can give us an update, said there was an issue for one of the trucks and this being fixed. Grass and lean limbs, of course, that's picking up with the spring and summer, anytime we have storms and they're doing trimming, and of course, the more, mowing more grass, they're picking that up. Transfer station, it's working good. I believe there's, is there like 500 poly carts that they, that we had received have been placed?
Are being placed.
Been, been the process of being placed.
Yes.
Those will have a serial number and they're registered in the account. Right now, we have, leaving the budget for next year, another $130,000 for another small sanitation truck, which would give us two, but the other ones, at times, is questionable, I believe, so that, that's one of the smaller trucks that we'd like to worry about having a.
CDL.
Yeah. I can't remember if that was in his wish list or in the budget, $15,000 for tarts for the roll offs. Oh, yeah, and $24,000 for poly carts, that would be a REIT grant if we receive it, be for another 500, but that's, just depends on the state's budget, funding, whether or not that is possibly not funded or something, and that, you know, they would maybe fund somebody else's water lines or something like that instead of, or something like that, so that may not be as far as a REIT grant.
And the tarp cover, the roll off tarp covers are budgeted.
Okay.
Any questions for Mr. Stelling on sanitation meeting?
Are we, I know we used to, I don't know if we still are. We allow people just to take a pickup load of trash out to the transfer station and unload it?
Yes.
Do they have to have a receipt?
We ask, we ask that they take your bill out there just to prove that they're a customer. Yeah, we do three, three dums a month, I think.
Good.
All they gotta do is haul it out there.
Item K is Finance Committee Meeting, May 3 and May 15, 2017. Mr. Benson?
All right. We had a 4:30 meeting back on May 3, and met, and most of it was discussing rate structure. And we didn't discuss much other than that. And again, today, we had our normal finance committee meeting before this one, and Dr. Pakey was there, spoke about the scholarship invoice and cleared up any questions that we might have, and we'll be hearing from him here just a little bit later. We reviewed our claims and approved those. We reviewed the financial report. If you're interested, on page seven of your papers is the hike, kind of the bigger claims, if you want to take a look at those. There wasn't any that was real huge until you get to the bottom and see the health insurance portion of our payroll. And then we spent some time, again, on our rate structure this evening, and also talked about our budget and when we might be able to have a budget hearing. And I believe Joe Don's going to speak about that just a little bit later. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Benson. As far as my report's concerned, a lot of things that I was going to bring up have been discussed. Really appreciate the volunteer effort that took place going into the, getting the fields and everything ready for the rec park as well as that with the staff. We're welcoming a lot of people to town here lately with a lot of different things, with graduation, colleges two weeks ago, and we've got high school graduation coming up. Of course, a lot of different instant activities going on, so I have had, you know, very positive feedback from people that haven't been here before and how nice our community looks and things of that nature. So we see a lot of our flaws because we want better, but I, I think we need to continue to appreciate what we've had, what we have and what we've got going on and continue to, you know, work in those directions. But there's a lot of hats on the back that need to go out there into the community and so on, without being able to mention all of them. It is appreciated and it hasn't gone unnoticed. I'm happy to answer any questions that people might have. We, like Mr. Benson said, for those of you who wonder, we do plan on, we're still waiting on the study to come back to tell, the rate analysis that we've sent out for our own knowledge, so that we can tell whether or not we're going to put forward a rate that structure that's going to be appropriate. We will be looking to have a public hearing before our regular June council meeting, and then hopefully in the June council meeting, we'll be able to approve not only budget but also the rate structure. So if there are not any questions, I'll turn it over to Joe Don for the city business manager report.
Any guess move on that study?
I, I really thought getting it here before tonight would be pushing it, but I do expect it within the next week or so. A lot of my, a lot of my report has already been covered. Councilman Stelling hit on the water loss report that DEQ did, or helped us walk through. They did provide us with soft, software that will help us track that from here forward. They did, you know, a lot of the things that we've done recently have mitigated some of the areas that we, that they were concerned about, such as the electronic grid meters and being able to handle, being able to find water usage that was maybe. and being able to handle, being able to find water usage that was maybe not being reported in the past. They also, you know, did comment that, you know, the quicker we can do repairs, the better for our system, and more revenue for our system because of the cost. We do have a relatively high cost of production, and we have to try to compensate for that. Our budget process is going as planned. At the current time, we have finished all of our committee meetings, and right now, we do have a balanced budget. Across all funds, we'll be looking at about a $15.8 million budget. General Fund will be about a set, will be about 7.4. Utility Authority is probably going to be around 5.7. Would be by far the largest project that we will look at doing next year will be the replacement of the storage tanks on Young Street. And I, that would go toward our, it's about a $2 million project, and we've got about a $3 million capital improvement plan for 2017, 18. We will be seeking loans, funds to pay for the $2 million water, water storage tanks. And we have about $4.1 million of tran, either transfers out, or transfers between city funds to balance the budget. For all of the council members that haven't been able to attend a newly elected officials' training, there's one coming up in Oklahoma City on June 8th, and one is also on June 15th. If you're not already scheduled to attend one and would like to attend one of these, please contact Angelica at City Hall, and she can get you, she can get you squared away. I did receive, we have participated in the past in the Oklahoma Academy Town Hall series of meetings. I got a notice on, last week, on the 2017 Town Hall Conference will be October 15th through the 18th. There is a time commitment that you are asked to make for this. It is a pretty intense deal. This year's Town Hall Conference is going to be held at the Choctaw Nation Resort and Conference Center in Durant. The topic they will be discussing over those three days is the Oklahoma Votes Improvement, Improving the Election Process, Voter Access, and Informed Voter Engagement. If anybody would like to attend that, please let me know. We have the nomination form to get sent in, and we can make that, we can see what we can do to make that happen. In the past, we've been able to get a few grants from OED to help pay for conference fees, and we'll try to, maybe they'll offer that same, that same incentive to help get people from Northwest Oklahoma to these, this particular conference. That's been a challenge for the academy in the past. Some kind of current events. We did kind of touch on it, there was a water leak at the corner of 7th and Center Street. We have a pretty big hole right there in the middle of the street right now, or in one lane. We will not be working on that street, that corner, until after school is let out. It's anticipated that we're going to have to replace about half the block, half the corner, and we feel that it will be an impediment to the school traffic and everything if we did that at this time, so we're going to wait till school's out and leave that area See, we also have a water leak on Mill Street and 14th that we're working on. Town Hall, I'd like to trim. Mayor, Mayor Parker talked about the rate study a little bit. We are planning on having a special meeting on Monday, June 5th, at 6:00 PM. Part of that meeting will be a public hearing for budget discussions, and we are going to push to have the rate study presented at that meeting, and also have a public hearing over utility rates at that meeting. And Mayor and Council, that would be my report at this time. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Does Council have any questions for Mr. Don? Thank you, Joe Don. Item 7 is presentation from NWOSU of the 2017 Spring Semester Alva Incentive Scholarship Program. Mr. Byrd.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, before we begin, I'd like to introduce those folks in the back that I consider the huge Brain Trust of Northwestern. Dr. Janet Cunningham, our university president, Mr. David Pekey in the corner, Vice President for Administration, and of course, Mr. Caleb Mossberg, who's our Dean of Student Affairs and Enrollment Management. I'm not going to spend a lot of time, you and David have already talked about this bill extensively, I assume, and I assume you don't have any questions, but before you should have a bill for $273,416.57. Since you've spoken to David, if you can, questions come up, I'll be happy to address that, or someone in the back could probably address that. If I have no questions, I want to, once again, thank you and thank the citizens of Alva for the support. It is huge, it makes a huge difference for our university and for our students, and thank you for your continued support.
Do you have one question?
Yes, sir.
And you may not have the answer, but that's, you know, that's fine. Of all these students that get these scholarships, what is the, the average percentage of, of graduation from a university? It may not be Northwestern, may transfer, et cetera. How many of these students graduate within four years, five years, however long?
Caleb, you know that answer?
We can get that to you, official.
It's a great question. It is a great question. You're asking what, what's the return on investment?
Exactly.
Yeah. Any other excellent questions to have? Okay, if nothing else, I'll be followed by Dr. Janet Cunningham.
Well, thank you, Skeeter and Councilman Eckhart. Really, certainly graduation is a very important part of that, but the return to the city of Alva is that those students are here in a particular semester, two semesters, eight semesters, whatever that happens to take, so.
Spend money in stores and our businesses.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Yes.
I would echo Mr. Byrd's remarks, as always, we, as I tell you every time we come, we don't take this for granted, we want to steward it very, very carefully because it is such a difference maker for us. Graduation was referenced a minute or two ago, and we did have a large graduating class. Dr. Hannaford, who I'm going to include in whatever Brain Trust we have, could give you those numbers, but I think graduates were up about 20, 30 this spring, and then our, of course, our December was a large graduation also, so we're intent on replacing those students who are moving on to do whatever it is they're going to do, enter the workforce, graduate school, professional school. Couple of big things that we're focused on at Northwestern right now, I've heard a lot of times that the word budget's been used, and that certainly is first and foremost in our minds, because we are just waiting to see what the state is going to do, you know, the large budget hole that's out there, and coming into this fiscal year that's just going to be ended, we had a 16 percent budget cut, which obviously trickles down to impact the city of Alva, cities of Alva, Enid and Woodward, because we have funds being spent in all three of those, absolutely the largest by far here in Alva. Waiting to see what will happen with the state. We hope that they ultimately decide that higher education, education in general and higher ed specifically, is important to the, the citizens of the state. They have to figure out something by the last Friday in May, so we should know something shortly, or at least we'll know whether we're going into special sessions, so we'll wait and see what happens there. Also, the new DMP program is first and foremost on a lot of minds at Northwestern. We have our first class that's been accepted, I believe 25 new doctoral students that will be starting this fall, so we're excited about that. And it just made me think about it when Council, Councilman Benson talked about steer wrestling. John, my memory, we have 10 student athletes, which is about the largest number you can have at the college national finals in Casper here in June, just a few short weeks, and I think we kind of own the steer wrestling, to tell you the truth. I think we have, the top three in any event can go, and I think all three of those are from Northwestern, so, plus our women's team qualified and some ropers, so we're expecting to do well there. And I'll answer, try to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Does Council have any questions for Dr. Cunningham?
Well, as always, I mean, the, the university is such a great partner in our community, and we appreciate everything that the university does. Obviously, this is an item that we're going to vote on in our Alva Economic Development Authority meeting, and as far as the economic development incentive, I think this is a phenomenal incentive, it was a great idea so many years ago, and I'm glad that it continues to be a benefit to both the local economy as well as the university, so.
Well, thank you so much, and we, we understand how, how big it is, how huge it is to the success of Northwestern, and we never take it for granted, we appreciate it very, very much.
Thank you, Dr. Cunningham.
Thank you.
Item 8 is discussion and possible action to approve an agreement with the Alva Public Schools to provide a School Resource Officer for the 2017-2018 academic school year, is my understanding, and, and of course, we have Police Chief here, if he wanted to discuss anything, but this is a renewal of an existing agreement that we currently have, and so...
It is an increase in hours.
An increase in hours, okay.
They have asked for a, a second officer for 20 hours a week, so they'll have a total of, there'll be two officers there, one, one working six hours a week, and then one that's just a part-time officer working 20 hours a week at the school. We are getting reimbursed at the, at 33.86 for those hours. Ben, would you like to add anything to what we've talked about?
The part-time position will come from our force, but I've talked to the public school, and that, that position will still be available for us if need ever arises, so if we have a big enough call that we need another person, we'll, we'll have access to that person, so.
And the, and the increase was at the school's request.
Is that reflected in our budget documents?
Yes, it is.
Is there any discussion by the Council?
So that, in the background, they always says 10 hours per day, so actually it's 10 hours per week.
No.
For two officers.
Two, 10 hours a day, be, one is working 20 hours a week, and one is working six hours a day, so it'd be 30 hours a week. The, the one that's working the longer hours, his eight-hour day is split between the high school, or the Alva Independent School District and the Technology Center, and that's the reason, you'll have your, you'll have that on the, another agenda, another agenda item is for the Technology Center. They will only have one officer at two, or was it two hours a day?
Two hours.
I'll make a motion to go, to continue the agreement with Alva Public Schools to provide a Resource Officer for 2017-18.
Second.
No. Motion. Motion by Councilman Benson, second by Councilman Sherman, to approve an agreement with the Alva Public Schools to provide a School Resource Officer for the 2017-2018 academic school year. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Benson?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes. Item 9 is discussion and possible action to approve an agreement with the Northwest Technology Center in Alva to provide a School Resource Officer for the 2017-2018 school Same type deal. Is there anything out of the ordinary we need to know?
No, this, this, this is a continuation of what we've done since 2014.
I'll make my motion to, to have an agreement with Northwest Technology Center in Alva to provide a School Resource Officer for 2017-18 school year.
I'll second.
I'll give to Eckhart.
Win one.
Having a motion by Councilman Benson, second by Councilman Eckhart, to approve an agreement with the Northwest Technology Center in Alva to provide a School Resource Officer for the 2017-2018 school year. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Benson?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Item number 10 is remarks and inquiries by citizens. Public comment will be limited to two minutes per speaker, and we would ask that if there are public comments, that the speaker identify himself or herself and who they represent. Is there any public comment?
Troy Brooks. I just have a couple of questions. I probably won't be here when the utility meeting comes up, but I was, the tanks, the water reservoir tanks on Young Street, are those cement tanks, or?
They are, they're currently cement tanks, yes.
So, I was just curious, did the city look into having them repaired as opposed to having them replaced?
We have looked at that, and they were non-reparable.
Non-reparable?
Yeah.
Okay. And on the cost, I was wondering about the cost versus the income, as far as what the overall cost is for the water services, you know, with the personnel and equipment and whatnot, versus the income that's coming in off of the water? Do you guys have any figures on that for the public?
I don't have those figures in front of me, Troy. If you'd like to call me tomorrow, I'd certainly give them to you.
Okay. And I was also curious, there had been some mention about a reserve fund. I know at one time the city kept a million dollar reserve fund before they built the homestead, but you'd mentioned we had extra income after the oil field boom, and I was wondering, is there a reserve fund now, and how much money is in that fund?
What we have is, we're drawing a blank on what we call it.
Stabilization.
Stabilization fund.
Okay.
So that, that's in a budget shortfall year or something comes up, and it's, those funds were initiated...
Two years ago is when we initiated that.
And so we, we by formula contribute to the stabilization fund annually, in our annual budget, and at this point, Joe Don, I don't know if you can...
I don't, I'd have to look up to see what the exact numbers are. The airport fund is funded in full, ARC, in full being, I believe it was 35 percent of reoccurring expenses, personnel, insurance, not capital expenses. But ARC, the Economic Development Authority is funded in full, the airport is funded in full, the cemetery is funded in full. Me, and being funded in full, we do not make annual contributions to those at this town. The General Fund and the Utility Authority Fund are not funded in full, and we are currently making contributions to those at 2 percent of non-reoccurring revenues per year, is what the ordinance states.
But that stability fund, is that a totally separate fund by itself?
Right, we have built those in with long-term CDs and not separate, I mean, we've taken the money out of cash operations and bought longer-term CDs with them to maximize those dollars.
Okay. Okay. So that's where, you know, you talked about extra money coming in during the oil boom. I was just, it's not in a separate fund by itself, and it's mixed in with other funds, is that what you're saying, or?
It's accounted for separately.
It's accounted for separately, yes.
All right. Okay, that's, that's what I guess.
Thank you, Troy.
My name's Patrick Dooley. When I was listening to the street repairs and talking about getting everything done, especially Flynn Street, and I'm not real for sure about how the chip and seal and all that is played into, is that the same thing as we did the last time we did Flynn Street as with the oil and rock, or is that completely different than what we're going to do?
Chip and seal is what we did last time, but it is not what we're doing this time. This time, we're doing a two-inch minimum asphalt overlay.
Okay. That was my one question. Thank you very much.
Thank you. What's the timeframe on the downtowns where homecoming, you know, courses homecoming was started? We're hoping to start before the end of the fiscal year. Okay. And any? Have it completed before school starts back up.
Yeah.
Weather permitted. And asphalt plant cooperating. There are no other questions. Item 11 is remarks and inquiries by council members. Council members? Thank you all. We'll now open the Alva Utility Authority, close the city council meeting, and open the Alva Utility Authority meeting. Clerk, please call the roll.
Winters?
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Hannaford?
Here.
Benson?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Sherman?
Here.
Hamilton? Wallace?
Here.
All right. Item number three is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 17, 2017. And item B, approval of claims in the amount of $76,369.71 and payroll expenses of $63,671.28. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Winters, second by Councilman Sherman to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
All right. We will close the Alva Utility Authority meeting and open the Alva Economic Development Authority meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Winters?
Here.
Benson?
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Sherman?
Here.
Hannaford?
Here.
Hamilton? Stelling?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Item three is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at ADA meetings will be approved by one vote of the board. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 17, 2017. Item B, approval of claims in the amount of $29,701.44 and payroll expenses of $14,137.45. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Dr. Hannaford, second by Councilman Winters, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Item five is discussion and action on payment of NWOSU Foundation's invoice for the 2017 Spring Semester Scholarship Billing in the amount of $273,416.57. We heard the presentation by Dr. Cunningham and Mr. Byrd, and we heard the finance committee, David Pekey regarding this request. This is a routine request for their twice-a-year request scholarship from the sales tax for the Economic Development Authority, so if there's any discussion, we can have that. I thought I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2017 Spring Semester Scholarship Billing in the amount of $273,416.57, and that would be with Northwestern Oklahoma State University.
Second.
Motion from Councilman Benson, second from Councilman Eckhart, to pay NWOSU Foundation's invoice for the 2017 Spring Semester Scholarship Billing in the amount of $273,416.57. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Benson?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Item six is discussion and action on Resolution Number 2017-002, a fiscal year 2016-2017 budget amendment in the amount of $8,532 for increased scholarship expenditures. So basically, when we set the budget for the scholarship, we were off a little bit, and in order to fund the full amount, we need to approve a budget, or amendment to the budget in this resolution.
Are these just unforeseen scholarships that were given beyond what we expected, or?
No, we estimate, with the college itself, we give a, they give us an estimation of what they were going to be giving out, and we were, our estimate was $8,000 less than what was actually given out. Some years we're not off, sometimes it's, some years it's off to the other direction that we don't address. It's just this year, we need to have a budget limit to.
It's not like we're pulling these funds from some other account or some other entity within ourselves. It's money that's been satisfied just for.
Just for, it's coming out of their reserves, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2017-002, fiscal year 2016-17 budget amendment in the amount of $8,532 for increased scholarship expenditures.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Councilman Winters, or Councilman Eckhart, and second by Councilman Winters, to approve Resolution Number 2017-002, a fiscal year 2016-2017 budget amendment as stated. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and we are adjourned.